Coming to order, please rise for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, free and equal, with the liberation of justice or wrong.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, councilmember Page.
Eric.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Here.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Here.
Councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Here.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a forum.
Move approval of journal meeting of September 6, 2016. Second.
Any opposed? I say motion carries. Journal is approved. We have no bid openings, muted communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening, so the road and bridge matters, under road and bridge matters, item number one, first district.
Receive file, plans, specifications, and detailed estimate of cost be approved and the director of procurement be authorized to advertise for bids pending authorization for the Federal Highway Administration as requested and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties.
All in favor? Any opposed? I say motion carries.
Item number two, second district.
Same motion. Second.
Second.
Actually, you've got to read that because it's different.
Receive file, plans, specifications, and detailed estimates of the costs be approved and the director of procurement be authorized to advertise bids pending authorization from the highway, the Federal Highway Administration as requested, and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties.
It is, but it's a separate project, so we wanted to vote on that project.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? I say motion carries.
Moving on to the communications, Mr. Chair, item number one, all districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Receive file, and the county council be directed to prepare appropriate legislation, same motion to item number four, and that will be the order.
Add-on this evening, Mr. Chair.
County Executive?
Nothing further to report.
No special committees, remove to public forum. We have quite a few speakers, so we'll leave it. You've got two minutes to speak. And first speaker?
First speaker this evening is Robert Schmidt, and Mr. Schmidt, we file by Anthony L. E.
Two minutes.
Why am I being limited to two minutes?
You're on the clock.
Councilmembers, I would like to apologize for my outburst from my seat following my speech last week. After the meeting, oh, wait a minute, I would like to ask you all at this point if any of you had the opportunity to view the voice recognition captioning on YouTube to verify my concern about the captioning for council meetings. Have any of you done that? Yes or no? Okay. And there's a handout that I want to show you to help you understand and demonstrate how indecipherable the captioning is.
You speak out a term one more time, you're going to be removed from the...
I have screen captured three excerpts from the speeches made in opposition to the developments of 21 Bauer from August 30th. The speeches were not summarized in written form by the county clerk. I would like you to look at these papers that I've given you, and I invite you all to go onto YouTube, turn off the sound, and read the captioning for any meeting, then challenge you to tell me if you could understand the contents of the speeches from what you have read. As well as the issue of accurate records not being kept on record, this omission also places St. Louis County Council in breach of federal Americans with disability law. According to the U.S. Department of Justice, the ADA requires that Title II entities, state and local governments, communicate effectively with people who have communication disabilities. The goal is to ensure that communication with people with these disabilities is equally effective as communication with people without disabilities. Now tell me how the voice recognition captioning in any way represents effective communication, because it does not. And further, when choosing to aid an aid or service, Title II entities are required to give primary consideration to the choice of the aid or service requested by the person who has a communication disability.
Need to wrap it up.
The state and local government must honor the person's choice.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but the gen is transcribing all of the comments that he requested to be submitted to the public.
Correct, and he will get a full transcript of those.
Okay, I just wanted to let him know.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I would like to finish what I was saying. Summarize, may I speak?
No, we have more speakers. Thank you.
I'm requesting this because other deaf people do not have effective, you know, access to these transcripts. You're going to give it to me, but they do not have the same kind of accessibility, and they need that accessibility. Please.
Sir.
Please. Next speaker is Anthony L. E., followed by Ebony Williams.
One of my concerns about being at this council meeting is due to the fact that there's young men that are being murdered in St. Louis County, and I see that St. Louis County Police Department has not set out a Major K Squad to investigate this murder. Is that Darren Seals, a very active person in Ferguson protests. That's the main reason. My second problem is we have a speed trap problem in St. Louis County, that Steve Stinger was greatly out there for us to support him in our communities, but in that community we still continue to have speed traps and police departments still harassing people in our community. According to Chris Carson, he sued and filed lawsuit against 10 cities in Missouri, happened to be St. Louis County as being one of them, but St. Louis County along with another of municipalities continue to run these speed traps. And if you go to St. Louis County Municipal Courts, you see majority of the people that's in the municipal courts are blacks, and I'm quite sure that there's more blacks than whites in that county at the time. And my third thing, why don't we see any black people on your council?
We do have a black person on the council. She's absent.
One black person out of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight?
Well, you're going to have a new one at the first of the year. You're going to have a new one at the first of the year.
One out of seven, one out of eight?
That'd be two out of seven.
Oh, two out of seven? So are they considering that the chairman, Mr. O'Meara, is, you know, blocking people from being in the seat?
I don't quite follow you.
The same person that we vote for, the same person that's over our community that you want us to vote for you every year? You are the same person that's in St. Louis County that's every year that's getting us to try to vote for you? Have you decided to come out to St. Louis County?
It's two minutes, Mr. Chair.
Have you decided to come out to St. Louis County and get other people to run? No.
Your time's up, Anthony. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ebony Williams, followed by Amina Ali.
I want to say this as much as apologetically as I can because I see that y'all not really paying us more attention, but I want to say Darren Seals was a Ferguson activist who made drastic changes in growth within his community. Unfortunately, Seals was murdered on September 6, the same date that y'all just passed y'all little thing on, and we still don't have no answers to no shock, I'm sure, to St. Louis County or anybody else. He was harassed on several occasions, one in which he was stopped and seven police cars was behind him, and he was being treated like a threat when he did absolutely nothing but leave a protest, the second while dropping paperwork off to the dialysis center for his mother, in which Ferguson Police Department physically and mentally harmed him and his 14-year-old brother because he looked like a drug dealer. We want more information than what Benjamin Grande or whatever his name is gave. We request Major K Squad and accountability for the fact that when they came out there, they did not take all the evidence from the crime scene to be tested. There has not been Major K Squad. We have not got any updated information, which is unacceptable because what type of training are y'all giving y'all police officers if they go to a crime scene? I don't know if it's because he was a Ferguson activist that y'all don't want to do y'all job and investigate his death, but that's pre-crap to me, that six people have died in the same exact way, and y'all mean to tell me that y'all have no type of leads, no Major K Squad, no nothing called out, but when the man at the Cardinals game got beat up, robbed, or whatever happened to him, they hurry up and called that Major K Squad? And this, I'm standing here today because I'm standing for Darren Seals, and this is my last time. This is my demand, is for y'all to call the Major K Squad. This justice or else.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Amina Ali, followed by Amir Brandy.
Being a St. Louis County resident for 27 years, I have seen the value decrease in schools, the community and police relationship, as well as the property value. A vision of streets you travel daily turn into a domestic war zone. Disparity is evident. The latest atrocity is the death of Darren Seals. The handling of this case, the negligence at the crime scene is absurd and just stupid. I come to city council not to supplicate or implore. I am simply demanding that St. Louis County take accountability for their negligence at the crime scene. Darren, in which individuals do comply, and when individuals do comply with local law enforcement, they have protection and not easy targets. I'm demanding that John Belmore activate the Major K Squad. Gun shell cases and a Jeep door was found at the crime scene, and it should have been processed for evidence. The community is skeptical and wary. We need action and answers now. $90,086,400 was the last recorded budget of St. Louis County Police, and that was in 2012. Taxes are steadily increasing, but the law enforcement, for local law enforcement, and so is the crime. Again, I demand that St. Louis County Police Chief activate the Major K Squad, or we will be forced to take back our communities and be our own law enforcement. We will take to the streets and practice our civil liberties, even if you can't drink your coffee in peace if I can't live in peace. I know you all heard "no justice, no peace," well, this is justice or else. Activate the K Squad.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Amir Brandy, followed by Cheyenne Allen Orlean.
Green.
Green?
My name is Amir Brandy, and I'm here on behalf of Darren Seals, who unfortunately can't be here. Darren Seals was killed. Darren Seals was threatened by law enforcement. He was followed by law enforcement. And in the event that you don't have evidence as to what caused his death, you investigate all angles. Upon hearing of Darren's death, we responded to the crime scene, in which we all saw the bullet casings in the immediate area, right behind the location of the truck. We all saw the doors that had been compromised, the door, the driver door of the vehicle. We all listened to the witnesses to this day. Law enforcement has not questioned. If this were an individual from U-City, Clayton, or wherever you live, and they didn't have a lead, they would activate the Major K Squad. So my question is, what determines whose life is precious enough to be investigated by the Major K Squad? The Major K Squad consists of the best homicide detectives in the metropolitan area, and we think that Darren's life and others deserve that type of investigation. We ask that you do your job. If you don't do your job, there will be no peace, and every one of your addresses will have protesters.
Okay. Thank you.
At the end of the day, that's not a threat, but if it was your life, we will be standing up as well.
Thank you.
We want you to stand up for Darren. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next speaker is Cheyenne Green, followed by Dee Horuba.
I'm here on behalf of Darren Seals and the assassination that happened to him. I basically want answers from Belmar and from St. Louis County. If they can go to buildings and take footage, why is there no answers? I don't understand that. I feel like the Major K Squad needs to be effective immediately because the scene has one already been a week old, and two, it should have been in progress from the get-go. I think that Belmar needs to be held accountable for not speaking out in the community, and he also needs to get his police officers in force. And we also want video footage released from what the St. Louis County Police Officers have took, whether that's through media, whatever, that video footage needs to be released, and once again, Major K Squad needs to be effective immediately. Also, I need to see more people of color, not two, like more like six to eight, because I don't think that that's right. How could you feel my struggle? How could you make an equal vote when you're not having the same problems as me? Your cousin, mother, brother, and sister aren't dying just because they went to the store, just because they cussed somebody out, so you can't feel where we're coming from at the end of all that. So I need you guys, like they said, to do your job, and I'm holding every last one of you accountable to vote for the Major K Squad, and that's it.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Dee Horuba, followed by Christine Hendricks. Dee Horuba. Christine Hendricks, followed by Lisa Smith.
No, because you're not signed up.
Thank you.
Which speaker are you, because we asked two people?
I'll say my name. My name is Christine Hendricks, and I've been here before, and basically I know how you guys operate, you're heartless and you're cold, and truly you don't care about what goes on in our community. I know you don't because you didn't vote for that health center that was, should have been put in North County last year. The person who was here and spoke on it said that you don't care. I know that you're heartless because your police force is heartless. I watched and recorded your police force tase a man in a wheelchair because they said he was resisting. I don't know how he was resisting since his legs didn't work, but I watched them tase him and arrest him improperly, and not according to any kind of ADA standards, nothing, okay? They just threw him in the back of a truck, okay? And as far as Darren Seals goes, the Major K Squad should have been investigating this. It is past time that you guys pay attention to your citizens in North County. They are your citizens. Many of you live in that district, and they have duly elected you to sit here and represent them. It is far past time that you represent them. The only person who sits on this county, this council, who has any mode of trustworthiness in here is the one person who's absent today, and that's the honorable Hazel Erby. The rest of you do not care about any of your constituents or any of the people who have had hurt, period. Otherwise, you would have been on this from the beginning. You, we shouldn't have to come back here time after time after time. It's been two years since the death of Mike Brown, and people have occupied the council. It's been two years since six people, six people have been assassinated or murdered, shot in the back of the head, and burned, okay? What happened to the sniper in North County? Was the Major K Squad out for that as well? It is far too long that you all have not paid attention to the black folks, because let's be honest about who lives there, the black folks and the poor folks who have elected you, who are counting on you to represent them every single day. And as I said the last time I was here, I will use every ounce of power, every bit of anything that I have to make sure that you will not continue to hold these seats comfortably. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lisa Smith, followed by Ashanti, and I apologize, Mr. Chair, I can't read the last name.
Hello, I would like the council to look into the transportation issues with, in Riverview Gardens School District. Transfer students are not getting the proper transportation. They have to walk for like 20 minutes just to get to the bus stop to go to school, and I have a high school student, and she has to leave at about 5:30 in the morning, and it's still dark. In North County, we don't have streetlights on the streets or on chambers or anything, so could you guys ask Riverview Gardens to give the student, transfer students closer bus stops to the closest elementary or school to their houses, or could you guys put streetlights in North County? That's all.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ashanti, and I can't read the last name. Then move on to Zaki Barudi, followed by Dora Owens.
Okay, good afternoon, or good evening. As you know, my name is Zaki Barudi, one of the Ferguson activists. I'm here really in support of our young people. I'm here because, as you just heard, the hurt from them in terms of the kind of ongoing oppression that takes place and the devaluation of the life of black people. Even though we only have a couple of minutes, I'm here to challenge you, starting with you, County President Steve Stinger. If you're serious and want to deal with the issues that's before you and everyone else here, I challenge y'all to meet us, or meet me and the organizations in the heart of the black community to deal with the critical issues that we can't really dialogue because of the limited time that we have. We're sitting on an apothecary. You are in positions of authority and leadership. The right and the moral thing is to take that leadership. The people are crying out for justice for Darren Seals, and I cry out with them. There must be justice for Darren Seals. And so if there was a major, as someone mentioned, if someone is murdered that's from a prominent person from the white community...
Zaki, you need to address the council.
Okay, but anyway, from the white community, you would have the Major K Squad. This was a prominent person in our community who was about trying to make substantive change through, quote, "the American way." So I challenge you, I really seriously challenge you. I challenge you to meet us, enter the community, to get to the heart of many of the social ills that y'all know exist. You know it exists, including economic discrimination.
Zaki, your time's up. Thank you.
Okay, so that's a challenge. I hope you... But anyway, I put that challenge out, and I hope to hear from you. I hope to hear from you.
Final speaker this evening is Dora Owens.
Okay, y'all ready? Let's go. We're gonna make justice ourselves. It ain't gonna be, it's gonna be worse than this.
Hey, can I say this? Who's that standin' there?
Y'all, what? Just wait.
You ain't gotta say shit to us.
We don't get it. Shut it down! We don't get it. Shut it down! We don't get it. Shut it down! Listen for that shit! 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 Shut it down!
University for Women's Health Services at Three County Health Centers. Bill number 212, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, an ordinance amending ordinance number 25,015, is amended by repealing and reenacting section two thereof pertaining to a contract with St. Louis College of Pharmacy for services of licensed clinical pharmacists for the Department of Health. Bill number 213, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with the PRIS Incorporated for services in connection with the Prescription Drug Monitoring Program established by ordinance number 26,352, and authorizing contracts with participating counties. Bill number 214, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, an ordinance amending ordinance number 26,405, by repealing and reenacting section one pertaining to a contract with Missouri Coalition Community Mental Health Centers for provision of a police officer to assist with managing the development of crisis intervention training. Bill number 215, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, an ordinance appropriating up to $89,381,325 of the funds received from the state of Missouri from the half-cent sales tax levied pursuant to ordinance number 24,245, for the Public Mass Transit Trust Fund for public transportation services from the amount received by St. Louis County from July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017, appropriating from the Transportation Trust Fund 14.55% of the amount received by St. Louis County from the sales tax levied by ordinance number 6,792, from July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017, net of the TIF transfers out, and providing for the amounts and method of dispersments to the Bay State Development Agency and use of funds for support of police services for the Bay State Development Agency. Bill number 216, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary, an ordinance amending title 12, St. Louis County advised ordinance since 1974 is amended in title traffic code by enacting and adding there two new provisions to schedule six. Bill number 217, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, an ordinance amending title one, St. Louis County advised ordinance since 1974 is amended county government by repealing chapter 109, Data Processing Division, and enacting in lieu thereof a new chapter 109, Department of Information Technology, and amending title two, St. Louis County advised ordinance since 1974 is amended county personnel by repealing and reenacting section two of 1.080 pertaining to salaries of appointed department heads. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Correction of bills.
Bill number eight, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Hold please, and that'll be the order. Final passage of bills.
Bill number 116, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold, bill number 116. It's ordered.
Bill number 180, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
Please draft bill number 180 without prejudice.
It's ordered.
Bill number 202, introduced by Councilmember Page, for Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move final pass, bill number 202. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan, Councilmember O'Leary, Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 202, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 202 is finally passed.
Bill number 203, introduced by Councilmember Page, for Councilmember O'Meara.
Take it up, move final pass, bill number 203. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan, Councilmember O'Leary, Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 203, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 203 is finally passed.
Bill number 204, introduced by Councilmember Page, for Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move final pass, bill number 204. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby. I'm sorry, Councilmember Page, that's my place. Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan, Councilmember O'Leary, Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 204, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 204 is finally passed.
Bill number 205, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move for final passage of bill number 205.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan, Councilmember O'Leary, Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 205, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 205 is finally passed.
Bill number 206, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of bill 206.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan, Councilmember O'Leary, Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 206, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 206 is finally passed.
Bill number 207, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of bill number 207.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan, Councilmember O'Leary, Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 207, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 207 is finally passed.
We have nothing under resolutions or unfinished business this evening, Mr. Chair, so we'll move on to new business, but we have one prepared order.
Move for adoption of order number one. Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? I have motion carries. Order number one is adopted. Motion to adjourn. Call in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? I have motion carries. We are adjourned.